Thank you, everybody, for coming. I'm starting off the evening as District Clerk, since it's a new board and it'll be passed in a signed role by way of President Vice President. So the first order of business is to have Mr. Timothy. Congratulations on your position to take over the office. So we're gonna stand here for a second, sir. You can raise your right hand. Read after me. I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties
And I will faithfully discharge the duties.
Of the Office of School Board Trustee
The Office of School Board Trustee.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations. The next order of business is the vote of the Superintendent of Schools. Dr. Lucera, can we do it on distance? When you do it on distance?
We do it this way.
All right. Wait, let me correct that, something's missing. Wait, does the candle go hot or anything?
Yeah, you made me think I was doing it wrong.
I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Superintendent of Schools according to the best of my ability. Congratulations, Superintendent again. The next order of business is the election of Board Officers. I will make a solicitation for nominations for the Office of President of the Board of Education. And a vote will be taken until the majority is reached by a nominee. Do we have a nomination?
I nominate Lauren to be President.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Can we make your motion? Oh, other, any other nominations for President?
I'd like to make a nomination for Marcus.
All right, Marcus. Is there a second?
I have one more.
Okay. Thank you, Carrie. Okay, so now, so there's a motion for Lauren.
There's a motion on the table for Ms. Lauren Siamke to be elected as President of the Board of Education for the 2024-25 school year. You can now call for a vote on that nomination.
Okay. All right, we have ready. So, so the motion carries three?
Three, one. No, reject.
Three, two? So nomination is for Lauren, the motion carried three, two, but it's still a majority. So Lauren, congratulations, our Vice President. After I read you in as the President, then you take the initiative. Ready, let's rise. I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I do solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
The Constitution of the State of New York.
And that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of the School Board President according to the best of my ability.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Board of Ed Presidents to the best of my ability.
And congratulations. So now, continue on the nomination of the election of the Vice President. So it's four B, it's rated A. Nomination, election of the Vice President for the 2024-25 school year. There's our nomination for the Vice President.
I nominate Tom Sina.
Is there a second? My second. Is there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Marcus.
Is there a second for Marcus? So there is a two.
There's no second. So we have that, since we will vote for, we vote on the nomination for Tom Sina Harold to be Vice President.
Right, so we voted the nomination for Tom Sina Harold to be Vice President. Yes, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye? No?
No. Tom Sina, you vote?
Aye. So there is a three in this vote for Tom Sina to be Vice President for the 2024-25 school year. Do we do it just a second? Right, so, and the three results having and three results having been elected by a majority of the Board of Education. Tom Sina Harold is hereby declared Vice President of the Board of Education of the Center for the School District for the 2024-25 school year. Being further resolved that in the absence of this President of the Board of Education or his or her ability, inability to act, the Vice President of the Board of Education will act as President and be authorized to assume all of the responsibilities and perform all the duties of the President of the Board of Education as provided by law. The faithful performance in the office will be administered against any I do solemnly swear
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
That I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of School Board Vice President
I will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of School Board Vice President
All right, so consent agenda approval, I promote all consent agenda items as presented. Is there anything for consent agenda that we are is there anything in the consent agenda that we were
I think everything in the reorg is
So, we have resolved
Hold on, let me just go check. I'm just looking through everything, just to make sure they've got it that we're on, we discussed.
I just have a question about my consent program.
That's the other.
Yep, here it is.
It's up to you if you want. So, we have resolved a motion to approve the consent agenda item six A to establish A.
Motion.
Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Move from reorganization meeting to the regular meeting. Be it resolved that upon the recognition of the Superintendent of Schools, the Board of Education adjourns the reorganization meeting and sends to the agenda with a regular July 24 Board of Education meeting. Motion? Second? All in favor?
Yes.
Have we done this?
Sorry, ma'am?
Yes, please. Well, then, just officially, officially?
Official, official.
There you go.
Just raise your right hand, read after me. I, Janine Barner
I, Janine Barner.
Do hereby solemnly swear
Do hereby solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America.
And the Constitution of the State of New York
And the Constitution of the State of New York.
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of
And I will faithfully discharge the duties of
The Office of District Clerk
The Office of District Clerk.
Of the Board of Education of the Center for the Education and Public Security. To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Do we want to go to the picture now or do you want to do it in there? Do you want to go to the picture now or do we want to wait until?
Um, we have a lot of people, so they would say
Are you starting to run into court?
Yes, we have several presentations, we have three presentations at the meeting this evening. First one, we can start with the 2024-25 safety plan.
So annually, we review the safety plan. We update it each year based on regulation changes that occur to make sure all protocols are being met as per educational law. So we present it to the Board, to the public. Our plan tomorrow will be posted on the website as a draft, and it will be up in public commentary for 30 days, and we will adopt it at the end of August. So tonight, we're going to move with the purpose, kind of really go back to beginning of safety plan because there are changes coming forward from the Board of Regents that are expected to be adopted by the end of this month. So we're going to move the purpose of the plan, what the building level safety plans are, both risk reduction, prevention, and intervention actions that we take, training drills and exercises we do within the district, early detection of violent behaviors, how we address those, and some proactive action options that we go forward. So again, the safety plan is required by the state law, which is safe schools against violence and education. The Commissioner does regulate the guidelines for this plan. And as I said, we do anticipate some changes coming forward. We've been attending presentations and webinars to go over and understand what those changes are so we can implement them next year, and then following year, we have further changes coming forward. So we're putting this out for the community to take a look at, and now just keep in mind, this is high level. The actual details of plans are in the buildings, and they're highly confidential, so they do not get shared with the public. As I said, you know, they have building level response plans that we develop, and we are in the middle of devising. We're meeting in the next few weeks as a team with our safety officer that we contract with OCS with. He's going to sit and join us to make sure that we're meeting all updated protocols from the Commissioner in those plans. And again, they're confidential, they do not get shared with the public, they're only shared within the building as needed. So we do have some risk reduction and prevention measures that we take. We have a policy on bullying, violence, and harassment. The admin team meets with all the staff on the first day of school, the Superintendent's Conference Day, our Welcome Back Day. We do a presentation on the updated safety plan, what's required, what are the expectations of our all the staff, mental health training, in order to make sure that everybody's fully aware of any changes that took place and to advise them on that the risk plan is in place up to their principles. At the building level meetings, when they meet with their staff, they go into depth as they're with their building level plan itself. But I present as the, to the higher insurance on that first day of reporting. We do the mandatory trainings, drills, and exercises. We have to have four lockdown drills throughout the school year, two of which have to be done prior to December 1st. We have to do eight evacuation drills, again, four have to be done prior to December as well. These evacuation drills are not just fire drills, but they're also the go-home drills, the early dismissal drill that we do in December is included in that evacuation drill. And then the building levels, they do tabletop exercises. So they usually pick a particular incident, and they will simulate an emergency situation and what their response would be for that in order to kind of go through what anticipated protocols would be. Meet with the Suffolk Police Department. Our safety officer is going to get more involved in those as well as try to bring outside resources to the team so that everybody's fully trained and aware of potentials that could be coming our way. So early detection of potentially violent behaviors. This came into play a few years back, and it was mandatory that we train the staff on how we detect violent behaviors in not only students, but within the district, within our visitors. So our goal, if you have early intention of a violent state in students, you can eliminate up to 85% of potential crisis. So it's knowing those signs, warning signs and symptoms of suicide and violent behavior in our students. And again, not just our students, but our staff as well, and anything that might be in the building and offering other resources to help that we have available. Oh, so we do have mental health training, that we have every 98% of all staff have been trained in mental health
Mental health, obviously.
For safety. That has taken place over the past that we have been doing that. So we have been training all the teaching staff, administrative staff, custodial staff, security staff, bringing in the bus drivers from on-top bus, trying to get them trained. We're trying to make sure everybody that sees a child knows what to look for and how to help prevent these either danger to themselves or dangers to the district, to the other students around them, know what the child is in need. So that is something that we fight ourselves on, and we brought that in, and we're continuing to do that going forward. It's through a ramp through some department, was it? So we're, you know, there's no cost to the district, it's a great resource, and it's a great training tool for everybody. We also go through protective action options, so the general things that we do within the plans. We discuss cancellation part of our school, which typically is snow day. Typically, there could be other reasons that we would have to do that. What a general evacuation is, the general go-home in the need of an emergency. What's general shelter, what would be a lockdown or a lockout. We go over all those within the plan in a little bit more detail. Again, more detail in the district-wide plan, but even further detail within building level plans for staff so they know exactly what to do with the children. Again, it will be up on the website for commenting through August 9th. It has to be up for 30 days. And any questions, comments, any questions, you can directly go over to my office. The final time will be your possession of the board at the August 27th of our meeting. Any questions for the Board Office?
The special education setting, the likes of classes and stuff, obviously have a different meaning and plan. Have they been brought in to kind of work with the needs that they have for students?
They would get addressed in the building level plan specifically, in each of their plans in a specific section. So as we're going, we're having the safety officer from OCS come. Over the past few years, we've been revamping the district plan as well as the building plans. And now that we have a safety officer from OCS, it's just another resource, another tool that's on our fingertips. He does this with all his districts, and they have, you know, the Commissioner writes readily available so he's going to come in, sit in this room, the principals, myself, Mr. Bo, and go over those plans to make sure we take out all of those little nuances and not let it stay in there.
Yeah, because that population obviously is included one, so just to have a checkpoint maybe three or four times a year is to make sure we're meeting those needs.
So some of the Commissioner regulations that are changing is just verbiage, as well as making sure you're announcing when you're doing your drills, talking, you know, educating the staff and students a little bit more on the drills. We do that already. I'm happy to say, as I've been listening to these presentations, a lot of it, we're already getting a lot of those points. But it's going to just be some verbiage changes going forward, which is going to take some time for people to get used to. So we'll start introducing that as that will come to fruition. So those changes will be July of 2025, I believe. This year, very rare changes that we're seeing in the plan.
Yeah, I always say like in the midst of, in the vast instruction of everything, it's easy for them when you get to find the nuances of the classes that are more difficult and more complicated, often we have to react.
Yes.
So we're just trying to see if we're probably going to have to dial out and just offer that voice. You know, I'm sure he knows a deal with that, I just want to kind of put it out.
Yep. Oh, yeah, so we actually have, back when we five years ago
I first came in.
Dr. Lucera first came in, we had the Sheriff's Office come in and do our penetration tests within the buildings. They come in as a surprise visit. We don't tell the buildings when it's happening, and they see if they can get in the building. They check all of our doors, make sure that it's locked, are we following protocol? Fortunately, last time we passed because we don't tell them, it was a little nerve-wracking, so the whole phone calls we got submission, I'm breaking the building, you know, but they, everybody followed protocol, which is great. But we haven't done that assessment in about five years. So we are in the fall hoping to do that assessment again. The Sheriff has a courtesy. We also just contracted with a new security firm. The RFP was up, and the successful bidder started today. So they have another resource, a team, a new eyes, we set eyes to kind of take over our plans as well as do those penetration tests as well. We're looking at all our security within the building to see, do they see any shortcuts that we might have? Do we have security placed in the right spots? So they're helping us with that as well. So we will be consulting with them over the next couple of months, as they get to know buildings and staff. And then come September, when we're up in writing, we'll have them come in and do some walkings with us to make sure that everything they have is working to the best of their ability.
I just have a question, if you had an active shooter in the buildings, it may look different depending on the building. So if you're in an elementary school, children may be inside a 13 in the classroom. If you're in the middle or high school, children may be like in transit in the bathroom. Do you account for every single room in every building that in the event something occurs like that? And how you would alert the student and how the protocol is going to be looked?
So when we do the drills, when we do those lockdown drills, we do them at all different times, not just during a regular fifth period at 10:20, you know, or at a time. We do them when students are passing through the hall so that people know what to do. We do it when there's much periods going on for elementary, kids are outside, so the staff is out there who know what to do. So, yeah, we do, we try to make sure that we address any potential situation. Obviously, you know, we never know what is going to happen, hopefully never. But we do take action to make sure that we're training in those odd situations because unfortunately, those might be the most unlikely situations. We also have the RaBAP in place. Most, almost all employees have RaBAP, which is our protocols. It's a geo fence within the district, so if in an emergency, anybody can call, not phone lines, I just pushing them up. Anybody that has access to it, so they can call whether it's an active shooter, if there's an injury, whatever it might be.
Where is your phone, is that on your person or?
It's our own personal devices. Yeah, so it was, you have to opt-in to do it, you have to be constantly doing it on your own personal device. But again, like I said, it's a geo fence, so when you're called, we can't set it off. But that allows then, once it's activated, administration gets alerted through the app. That's something the state police can do, things to do, or just start pulling out power messages to assist.
Next question about the security firm.
Yes.
So that changed over, obviously, that wasn't part of that conversation. Had we retained the current security that was with?
Yes, all security is registered, which is good.
So familiar faces the intent.
Correct, yes.
So Carrie, as asked here, we had some issues that came along that follow the umbrella of safety behind it. What is the plan to address those? When will the board find out that those are addressed?
So we're going to, when we meet in, throughout this month, build up the building level plan. That's what we'll address, that's what we should have clarified in the plans. Then we're going to go safety on some proposals on those, to make sure that there's details with regards to happen.
So we'll find out about that from the next meeting?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So can we keep on, Carrie? We have data, there is a human in force. We have, obviously, the tennis courts behind the high schools are in they're in need of repair. We did some core tests, Carrie, we're going to do a little bit more to really determine the level of deterioration and, you know, to basically determine that it's kind of cause prohibitive to do replacement at this point. So looking to use some added repairs, and Carrie, we're getting to more detail about what that would look like.
So just as a reminder for the Board, the public, if you're not aware, the district does have a reserve plan to be updated and adopted every year, and all, once we close out our books for the year. That plan does speak specifically about the reserve, the repair reserve itself. And basically, it's used to do some capital improvements, which are just that, a repair. It's not a replacement in whole, it's unaided projects. The Board, without overapproval, can establish the reserve by majority of the vote. The expenditures can be done only after the public hearing is upheld, except if we do it in an emergency situation. And in those situations, we would have to pay back that reserve over the next few subsequent years. So we always try to make sure, when we have a review that needs to be made, if it's not an emergency, we hold a hearing, we make sure the public's aware of pulling money from this, and what it's for, and therefore, we can expend the money and not have to repay back over time. So currently, as of now, we have $462,000 being in the repair reserve. And it cannot be used for anything else within the district, it is restricted just for specific purposes, repairs within the buildings. So as Dr. Lucera said, the high school tennis courts are mostly in disrepair. But for right now, trying to find all of our different plumbing streams and the mechanics of money. We had J.C. Rodder come in, well, you can see here, the quartz look, like, a lot of cracks. We have brass growing in them, separation, we've done a lot of patchwork, discoloration now. There we go, and I can tell you as a tennis mom.
Yes.
So we asked land tech group to come in and take a look at it, they're on contract. And what needs to be done is all these loose debris will come out of the cracks, they'll patch the existing cracks, which is about $32,000 per feet, install acrylic sand and coloring system for $37,000 per feet, and paint all the name lines of all the courts. At a total cost of about $156,000. So, yes, that's priced, tag is high, but in order to actually replace the courts, we're looking at $650,000 upwards to $800,000 to replace all six courts. So we had a geotechnical investigation So we had a geotechnical investigation with J.C. Broderick, who's our environmental firm that we use, come in. Actually dug and did core sampling to determine, there were three options. If the core was good, we could kind of just resurface the top. Core no good, whole thing has to be replaced and the base needs to be re-done and then you have to put out a top. The other option we were looking at was potentially a turf option for that. Turf is not common in high school tennis, so it really became a known option in my personal opinion. But in conversations with Mr. Code and with Section 11, it's not really a common place to use turf in high school tennis. So it came down to one of these geothermal results come back at us. And it took a while to get those results back, but what we did, we found out that the base of the tennis courts is slowly going away, which is going to require a full replacement in the next couple of years. But for now, because we don't have the success of the bond, we don't have any other funding source as of this point in time, and it's outside. So we do have capital reserve in place, but we try to save that money because those funds in that reserve are able. In doing an outside project solely alone, it does have to be able. So if you're doing outside, you need to do something inside along with it in order to get the aid on that project. So therefore, that's why the repair reserve is our other option is right now, just do repairs, buy us a little bit more time with the courts in order, until we can get to that point where we can do a full replacement. So that is the recommendation. We're asking to approve up to 24,000. The vote came in at 155,000, but there's always sometimes some hiccups along the way. So we wanted to have a little bit of wiggle room in case something comes up as they're doing their work. Like I said, Landtech was the vendor that we had come in to give us the vote. They're on the Huntington, Town Huntington contract with sports courts. And the repairs for this, we budgeted repairs of 30,000 dollars is what we typical work. We do do a hundred sports, but we're beyond that 30,000 dollar threshold at this point. It's at that 155,000. So we're asking the board tonight to approve us to use the repair reserve to go ahead and get this worked out before the start of the girls' fall season, starts of August.
How much time will it buy us to spend this 200,000?
We're hoping at least two years. There's no guarantee, Landtech puts in there too, there's no guarantee that the cracks won't continue to grow. You know, with the change in temperatures, it could happen. But for now, like I said, it's just buying time until we can either do a run, do a one-time testing of something to get that fixed, something that's able to do upwards of 800,000 dollar problems. So we had a vote, which was like on the lower end, 750,000, but that vote was from earlier last year. So with escalation, it was going on, the continuous use of those courts, we're going to probably work on more money as time goes on.
I just wanted to know too, as a tennis parent myself, who's been playing since they were five and seven years old, and we use that court as community member and also as parents and students. And I see tennis program grow exponentially. So the boys tennis team, varsity, and JV girls tennis team, varsity, JV is rather large. Without repairing this, I'm not adequate for the fold now. I'm considering a smaller now, but yeah, certainly, in my opinion, something needs to be done because it's a hazard. And we also use it for gym. So I'm already just kind of expressing this to the community because we had a lot of things go towards other sports. And I just want to voice like my opinion that tennis is also important in a larger recognition plays with.
Well, that's what, you know, these courts aren't used for communities alike. You come on at night, you stay on at night for the community, they often use the courts. They're highly used, you know, they have, because we also do have the wall available for people to hit, you know, for themselves, practice hitting. So they are used often. So we do want to, you know, essential of the schools, of the community use.
So roughly, it leaves us around 306,000. I mean, take it on a 50-year, 255,000 by the time we're done.
It would be 300,000.
Right. Now, do we feel, I'm asking just a question in general, I get the idea because if the courts aren't fixed, they're not playable, which means we won't have home matches. That's really what it would come down to. That happened to some schools years ago and that's, that's the last thing you want to see. You know, do we feel comfortable with our reserve balance with what's currently going on in the school?
Um, yes, at this time, Dr. Sarah and I were just talking again today as we were, you know, analyzing this presentation, you know, as we're, so we're due for a litigation service. This summer, we should be able to walk through with the architects to get that report going. And then the fall, the compensation team will review that to start going through that list. And we kind of revamping our fire power plan, which this conversation comes into play, like the repair reserve, capital reserve, bonds, general fund.
Connecting to something.
All the buckets of money, how are we going to do some things? But it's not to say that the board can't authorize opening another repair reserve, installing that whole code as well, which we're leaning towards as a recommendation when we go through that cycle.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that we're moving in a direction that if something does arise.
Yes.
And again, I get because at the end of the day, if these courts aren't playable, you lose your home matches. And section can shame that, and that would be a shame for our kids.
And our teachers are doing really well too. So we really want that to stand on the whole court.
Yeah. And the second, the second thing would be is the potential, if the tennis coaches are okay with it, that's another question. If you could put pickleball lines in there, that opens up a whole other avenue for the kid, for the adults in our community, safety and use of the courts. We've done it in different line colors, but again, we've done it through the process of talking with the tennis coaches because you have to make sure they're okay with it.
Yeah, we did have two things, I guess. One of the things is the, the availability pieces of workforce, right there. So we've been using the ad-rat projects so that we can get aid back on these internal projects. That's something that maximized the deal that, so that was the first one. The second one was that we did attempt to come up with sort of an amen with the town. The town was wanting to resurface our tennis, actually redo the tennis courts completely. Come back to that, they wanted to have access and they wanted to add their walls, which was what they've been following for. But the piece that was troubling to us was they wanted to access what we, during the school day. And even if we were to limit it only to the ones closer to the community center, they were still concerned over, you know, unauthorized people on school grounds during school day, the kids are out there. So we came, I wouldn't even say close to a deal with the town to have it replaced for free for, you know, the cost of taxpayers. But we just couldn't come to terms that they would own these by community.
How long was that conversation?
This year.
On the fall?
On the fall.
Is there a way of revisiting prior to taking a swing at it, prior to us spending that money?
Yeah, you know, and that was the third conversation.
But that was, that, the access was denied for the town. And it was also seen for our, our color in terms of.
Yeah, I mean, I guess, yeah, to me, if we could take a swing at it and get something that's covered, why not, number one? But then, you know, obviously, we can't have people on school grounds when school is session. And we also need reports when the sport is going on, so it really becomes hard.
It was a all-in-one proposition that was the problem.
Yeah, so in the past six years, there's been three conversations with the town.
Okay.
With, I can't come up to say that.
I ask these questions to get, because again, I'm trying to.
Yeah, I think, yeah, you're right.
But if we could add some people open to it, it might offer the community an opportunity to come out and play locally, which could, you know, ultimately maybe get some people on there to see what we're dealing with as well. But again, I would check with the tennis coaches because I know they're driving nuts with the additional lives.
Carrie, can you come into what some other schools do and if they can be able to have funding through the town? Because I know at least four examined school, there's tennis courts right there. What are the rules for, you know, assist? I know there's no, I think it's a gate that have one, so I was just curious what others schools have in their rules.
If they open up for the public.
Yeah, every day, just testing like what that was like.
It's only at the school.
Usually at the school, yeah, I know we're going, we can't get our own sports until you have to practice some of those. Yes.
And the paths are generous, I mean, between playground, between the turf field, but, you know, those agreements usually come with some access.
So Carrie, I've been, I've been on the courts too, they were terrible. When, when was the last time that they were?
We had done minor repairs about three or four years ago, I want to say. We did some just little patchwork. So that was. Budget depended on what we budgeted. So we were budgeting about 30, 40,000 dollars each year to do that work as prices were coming up, we're getting less money.
So is that a different type of work than this number between?
Yeah, this is going to be a little bit more, yeah. Those, what we did in the past, we didn't find it, like just fill the cracks. We're going to actually clean the cracks out, just fill the cracks and hopefully gain a little bit more useful money.
Okay, so I'm curious about the other one, because if we take this 30,000 and play it for 15,000. If we do that, we only get a year out of it, we're still ahead of it. And then a year would be folded to bottom, and then we're going to do it again. But it just seems like we come out ahead if we take smaller steps. Well, everyone's, nobody will do that type of repair.
I don't think they'll ever spare any more of my understanding. So we have a kind of text come in and said, here's my question. And then you came back and you went, 25,000 dollar estimate, and I said, well, that wasn't my question. So, yeah, we're, we're at that point that we need to do this in order to reserve and it'll move the part out of that until we get enough.
It tells you just like what state this repairs in, there were so many years. So thank you for bringing this to the public and mentioning for all the tennis parents of the community.
Okay, so the final presentation, this presentation regarding private community. And so, you know, we thought, and, you know, this has been, you know, I think, get the message here. It's just been a long and winding road, and Carrie was over the long and winding road. That's it. You know, we've really, you know, about 20 years ago, the district approached the Mazurakas family, to my knowledge, and asked them if they would be looking to sell the house to the school. Again, this is a property that was surrounded on three sides on Main Street. And his feeling was that, you know, it made sense for the school to, to purchase the property. Well, in January of 2022, Mr. Mazurakas, Mazurakas had been here for, you know, a couple of generations. And one of the family approached myself and Carrie and said essentially that the family, you know, had passed away. They were, the siblings were looking to sell the house. And they wanted to offer first crack at the school because they knew the school was interested. And they also believe that it would be appropriate for the school to take ownership of the house. But again, nothing can be very simple. So they started to get, we started to, obviously, started to consult with our legal team. It was quite helpful for terms of talking about, you know, what this means, how you know about acquiring property as a school district. And so, you know, that goes back to now, into February of 2022, ongoing consultations. And then essentially, by the time we got to April of 2022, the board authorized us to go and get a property appraisal. We really wanted to understand what the proper value of property was so that we could make an informed decision about whether this was practical for the district to make a move toward ownership. And keep in mind, you know, you have a family that wants to move rather quickly because they want to bring closure to the traumatic lives and move on once, once they make the decision to sell that. So in July of 2022, we finally got the appraisal report. And at the same time, we also received a market analysis because once we got the appraisal, we said, okay, it's fine to get, you know, what the property was worth, but we really wanted to get a sense for what the market were there. If this was on the real estate market, what might this property sell for? So we also went out for that. And at the same time, we started to say, well, there is a genuine interest, there's multiple reasons why. We thought that this might make sense and talk a little bit more about that later. But by the time August came around, we had, the CECL was requested. It basically is an environment with a tax study, we need to make sure that there were no issues with that if the school did ownership of. The board in September, so we went from January to September and the board entered into a contract to purchase the property. However, again, not very simple, the board cannot just purchase property. That's something really needs to be reflected. So we really started to think deeply about if the, if the district was going to own this, what could we possibly do with this? We brought in a civil engineer from our architect, BBS architects, who put the property with us, started to look at what the potential was for it. Anybody that has driven down Main Street at 3:15 on a weekday during the school year recognizes that it's a dangerous situation. We've got a large park on both sides of the court field and only one car can really come down the hill because it is dangerous. So we started thinking about a, you know, kind of kissing wheel traffic loop that might be helpful to, to mediate some of that traffic and make it more convenient for parents to, for everyone in the dismissal time. We talked with the city engineer about that. He felt like it was feasible possibility, you know, given the way the property situated. And again, we would need that property to pull something like this off because of the way it sits. We also wanted to have somebody, we also were considering, well, what does this look like? If we took the property, if we took the house down, if we kept the house, what does that mean? So we brought in a gentleman by the name of Mike Woods, who is a career technical education task representative. He came down with a colleague from Syracuse University to take a look at that and toured the house with us. And basically, you know, what we were looking at was saying, hey, what if we wanted to have a barber shop? What if we wanted to have a culinary school? What if we wanted to do something like that that would be creative, that could be a career tech center for our, for our district? Ultimately, my, sorry, my words recommendation was that the facility was, would not lend itself to any kind of useful educational, didn't have any useful educational value. You know, the rooms are small, the grants, the staircase is narrow, there's a lot of work that had to be done. You know, so for instance, if you had a barber shop, you could basically have one or two stations. So really not practical when you have something like that, you do like the setup for a class, or you teach 10, 10 kids and be able to have them practicing. Those kinds of things, which it seems that it would be a little bit impractical. He suggested taking that house down and considering new construction, which we was not really possible. At the same time, you know, we, again, considering the demolition of the house, we started to have a conversation with the historic district advisory committee. I invited a couple of members of the historic district advisory committee to walk the property with me. We are nestled in the historic district of Santa Riches. And one of the, one of the things that is really unique about our family is that it is one of the very few east of, I guess, the patchwork. Where like the first one that has a continuous city damage. And historic district advisory committee feels really strongly about that. And they're very passionate about it. So they did not want to see anything happen to the house, they wanted the house to remain in fact. And so, you know, we had that odds, what, what could we do? If it doesn't have any, if the house itself doesn't have an object, the property does, we were a little bit of a pinup. And in October, I attended the HDAC meeting and I presented on the end of the district. We had a conversation around what might be a superpoint for the, you know, for the property. And then we presented at the same time, a site plan that the civil engineer from BBS put together for us that basically had that kissing wheel car loop and would enable us to hopefully move toward. We had two, one plan was for the house intact, so we're going to move it out of the house. And try to, you know, realize that house could be a pretty, a safer arrival dismissal and to set a value of Main Street. And, and also connecting to a CTA pathway in agriculture that we were looking to build. So multiple ways we were looking to try to have this benefit on our community, our district, and our students. And then that was all presented, all of these things were presented in multiple presentations to our community. And in November, we had a public vote and the community, again, we cannot purchase property unless our community says, gives us the agreement to do so through a referendum. The community voted to approve the purchase and therefore, next up, after purchase time, continuing the long and winding road. So we went into contract and, oh, closed on the sale of the property. My just cut off over here. In December, we closed on the sale of the property. And we had, we started to talk about potential for, and, you know, because we were kind of, at the same time, continuously negotiating with the town. I was personally having conversations with politicians, with the special district advisory committee. And it looked as though they were leaning toward suggesting the demolition was, was something that the town was known to approve. In May of 23, the HDAC started the project. They declined, we were invited, I, I was trying to get back into the, into having another meeting with them to present our findings. We were declined to have that here in the property and basically went all the way back to October of 22. So it hit us back about 10 months, eight months. So it hit us back about ten months, eight months. And we were not feeling that good in the process. In June of twenty three, so June last year, about twelve months ago, the town came back to us and said, well, we have a suggestion. How about you move the house? And, you know, instead of tearing down the house, move the house somewhere inside of the ham of Upset Riches, so change its location. Again, you just said, no, that's not the simplest of things. We went through multiple, multiple conversations. We started to explore the costs of moving the house, do some investigative work in July of twenty three. And then that's forward to September of twenty three, we were not making a lot of progress. Town was going back and forth with us. We kind of felt that community towards the conversation a little bit. And in order to do so, we need to file with the market study agency against the kind of work here in this map. In October of twenty three, we came to an agreement and the town approved it and agreed to move the house to a property with a competitive bid. Since that time, we've been, since October of twenty three, as to me, going back and forth with the town, lots of conversations. And essentially, we had an agreement, a conceptual agreement, but it went on for quite some time between November and May, until the funding. We had some bid specs worked out and essentially it was the bid specs and, you know, posted all of these and we, and they are online, of course. But the bid specifications essentially were, you know, we get an offer for the actual house and then, and then we could deduct the cost and move the house. And that would be your loss. And ultimately, in June, June of twenty four, which is the last couple weeks ago, we had a public bid to move the house to some property. It was on June thirteenth and we opened it up two weeks after that. And that's where we are right now. What's that? Yes, that is very difficult to say. But, you know, we're, again, in all of the things that we did, we really attempted to just, you know, do our due diligence and make sure, get turned on. You know, do our due diligence and make sure everybody understood what was happening all the way along. Because certainly, this is a complicated issue and it's certainly not simple. We have the historic district advisory committee involved. We've got a community that, you know, some people are saying, hey, you know, we really need to do something about this traffic problem. Other people said, well, we really should be preserving this house, we could be doing something else to it. Personally, everybody knows my passion from the other side, I wanted to turn it into a, that's the health wellness center one morning, we talked about that. But again, when we started to talk about the cost of renovating the house, we brought our architects in. And ultimately, because of that, the construction of the house, the, for instance, the stairway going up is very, very narrow. I think it's probable that's going to be about eighteen inches wide, certainly doesn't quite, not code. So the house is not E D A compliant and certainly not to building codes. It's one thing if you're a private citizen, you purchase a home, you can purchase that home and you can live in it, it's not a problem. If you're a school district, you run into tremendous liability if you purchase a home and you do not bring it up to code. You must do, state education department will not certify the building for use unless we have it up to current codes. So that house is not E D A compliant. We need the environmental testing for asbestos and lead, all things that are forced upon us as a, as a school district. There will be new heating, a new heating system, the boiler is old, that need to be replaced, a full electrical upgrade, you know, they still have two prime outlets. You know, certainly we need codes, full electrical upgrade, the fire alarm system, the C L C system, we need the community as per current codes.
I just want to say, and after the year, E D A renovations.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. American Disabilities Act.
Yes.
So every, every building has to be.
Disabilities and not access.
Thank you.
Learning cannot help if it is not E D A compliant, I just want to clarify that.
And I'm speaking very quickly, but I guess there's a whole lot in here. So thank you for that, Tom. So yes, it has to be, you know, accessible for anyone with disabilities. The structural changes aren't necessary, doors widened, staircase are driving.
Or wheelchair accessible.
Wheelchair accessibility is important, perhaps included plumbing upgrade required. Basically, in, you know, cost projections from twenty twenty two, seven hundred and ten thousand dollars to bring that building up to code. It was, you know, viewed as really cost prohibitive because of course, all of those, all of those expenses need to be passed on to Center Riches taxpayers. And so, you know, in our opinion, it was more, I, I, what proved to suggest that demolition would have been a better option. You know, if, if we were to move in that direction, that would have been about a hundred and twenty five thousand dollar expense. You know, but again, you know, the town broke in, the historic district advisory committee, that was not an option. We determined that it is in historical corridor and therefore, we could not take the house down. Okay, so this is, this is Mike Woods. This is just basically the quote from Mike, that the home property would require extensive renovations and upgrades to make it suitable for the technical requirements, especially for safe, equitable, real world experiences and career technical education and building internally presented. It's not suitable for construction, new construction should be considered for an optimal recovery. And this is basically the correspondence we got from him after he came down and poured the buildings, it was highly problematic situation. Therefore, and again, going back to that timeline, when, when the town suggested removal, there was a few things we needed to do. And basically, there were certain conditions in the bid specifications that Eric worked out with the town. One of those being that the house would have, the house would have to remain in the ham of Center Riches. The district prepared in that cost, the lowest bit of price of that purchase, as I said earlier, price of house purchased less the cost of moving the house. We advertised a bit on our website, newsstand, from the way that it stands, as per how it may be. And the free bidding was held, we gave tours of the building to respective bidders, two different bidders attended. The bid openly took place on June twenty fourth at eleven AM. And one bidder received for a total cost of the district of seventy nine thousand dollars to. So that just under eighty thousand dollars. It is still at least forty thousand dollars left, less than what it had cost to take, to tear the building down and demolish it. But of course, it comes at a cost to us. You know, we have suggested that, you know, you know, factoring in two years' worth of due diligence, that this seems to make the most sense. And we have had that conversation over and over and shared all this information in public. So the recognition that Carrie put herself to the more education is to accept a little bit, or that costs seventy nine thousand dollars to remove the house. And on here is basically, this was the site proposal for the all-site renovations. And again, this, this wasn't, you know, not exactly drawn to scale, not a perfect rendering of what it would be. But as you can see, it was really about trying to build that kissing wheel car loop, trying to create some, you know, a safe entrance to new guys from Clayton New Way Elementary School. When this building was built, we're talking about a time when Main Street was much different. There were not six hundred kids in the building. You know, when you just had the one building on Main Street that expanded over time, and if you've ever been up in that, it's like a eighty, seven thousand pounds amount of older, traditional years. And there are not six hundred kids in the building. So there's a lot of power pickups and a lot of cars in the now, so for safety and for the community. You know, and there was another part of this that we talked about. Even if you sit on the right-hand side, that's and it's north, south on here would be east, west in real life, that would be Main Street. And that would be a green area where we would have some, you know, a sitting area where we'd have some, relocate, our planting, our plant, community gardens. And the town was even talking about putting that, a nice, you know, you know, the bus stop is there, putting fencing in a, in a, a nicer looking bus stop that would, you know, resemble kind of that small town charm. But, you know, so a way to aesthetically enhance Main Street, you know, tying the community gardens to our curriculum to try to tie it to that agricultural season pathway. And so, so really safety education and time to curriculum. And again, this came in and this was about one point five million to really change all of that. So, you know, I have to price that, but something that, you know, really could make a big difference for that, for our school.
So you said it was seventy nine thousand dollar cost to the district?
Correct, yep.
So that's.
Yeah, that's the way the game was structured, value of home minus cost of.
Net cost to the district, so.
Because they provide.
The net cost to somebody like that.
And the purchase price of the house was five, five hundred.
So we're looking at two, almost two point one million dollars to upgrade and move the house and change that area into apartment and a bus stop. But that upgrade would have to go through a capital process. That would be part of a, a future bond proposal is once the house is not owned. Whatever is decided to do with the house is then come up with a plan to fix Main Street over there and that would be all bond for that.
So hopefully, our, our cost right now is seventy nine K to finish the job.
To move the house and then.
To finish a little bit every month.
To finish the job, right. So that comes to the cost of five hundred and seventy nine thousand dollars worth of purchase of the house and everything. Plus one point five is two point one mil by the time we're done. This looks beautiful. That's a beautiful picture. Sometimes I garden, my house has this picture. So, you know, the reality that I'm concerned about is one, two point one additional run to bond that we already know we have trouble with. Or one point five, we should say, that we have to figure out how, how do we get there? Obviously, when this house was purchased, it must have been a conversation to have within the bond. What is the plan to pay for this without a bond?
The parking lot permission.
Yeah.
Yeah. We can't put one, we can't put one point five hundred in the job, I'm not budging.
Yeah, that's so.
It would be if there's, if there's enough money in the capital reserve, which we have a capital reserve, but again, we have to do an inside project along with an outside project to get heat on it. So in order for it to be an edible project, we have to do inside projects. But right now, we have, we'll have about two million in capital reserve at the end of this year. But obviously, other projects are more pressing than this.
That's my next question, Mark. Is do we have a list of triage, right? Because we obviously know we need water to our seating, we know we need the library done, we know we need certain things to kind of upstage inside of our buildings. And again, I love this look, but I'm concerned that we're going to take that two million dollars that we're talking about and not use it properly when the heat goes out of the building and we have to figure out how we figure, how do we take care of that? I just think there's deeper conversations from my end that I would ask to table it so that we can have a further dialogue and also visit some ideas and conversations. Again, I know it's been done, it's annoying because I'm a new guy coming in, I've asked these questions since this building's been around. I'm just now a little bit more on the inside of hearing things. I'm still learning as we go. You know, I do know that, you know, other places have taken similar properties that have done things. I know it's eighteen inches, E D A compliance, I get all that. You know, if you build a special education program that brings in a hundred and forty thousand dollars per student over the course of four years, with say, just five students, you're at one point five mil right there. So before we run into issue, you know, with saying, hey, we're going to cost the district this, you know, I just would love to say, can we or cannot, right? Because I have seen it done in that, in that program. You know, and hopefully, we can get a visit somewhere that, you know, that offers that opportunity, get some insight from that work to school program and see if there's any growth. Because again, you know, if you can attract some, some of the other communities to send their kids here because we can offer that kind of curriculum, you know, that brings in revenue to us, number one. And then number two, enhances the ability for our students to go school to work for school community. So that was just kind of what my mind is.
I appreciate your, your questions and I think they're very relevant. I just wanted to add to what you're saying. If we convert this house into a learning center, I guess that's bringing revenue, that's a wonderful idea, I think it's fantastic. The one thing to worry about, I don't know if you have a child in elementary or not, but I do, and there's a safety issue at hand, all ready. So if we can risk the parents in the community that have elementary school children, many of them will tell you that there's already several safety issues involved, that they've got a spot and a drop-off spot. And now bringing in more students to learn in that center, where are they going to park? So are we going to go into the King Colin where we're already like stuck there and you can barely fit in there and your kids are running across the street? So that's the one thing I wanted to bring up.
That would be a bus, that would be a bus driver because it would be a school setting.
There's going to be no kid, nobody driving there, no place.
It'd be a bus driver with students with disabilities.
We also could move the house to a different location and use it at a different location possibly, right? Do some example options, maybe move it to. We can move it within our property. Yeah, like maybe move it to the high school and then still do work with that, but from the revenue.
And again, this is a deeper dialogue in which, you know, Ricardo would have to help. Build that, understand that, this isn't just a one-level conversation, this is a more tiered conversation. And I know you guys probably have some capacity.
And I, and I get that, I think, like, you know, if we're talking straight R O I, I was saying, it'd take thirty years to get the, get back to the money, seven hundred thousand dollars to you because it's what they say with the hundred fifty thousand tuition. But in order to get a hundred fifty thousand dollars of tuition, we'd pay two hundred and something thousand dollars just to stay out of that building. You know, so, yes, bringing, you know, students from other districts, yeah, that's, that's great and that, that does bring some revenue. But the R O I on something like this when it costs us seven hundred thousand dollars to.
How many, we currently send out to O C's now, that would be the kind of ruin program that we'd be looking at. You know, like that would be instant money back at once the project is done. So in-house, you know, we'd be creating something within the community if we have four kids, two kids, three kids. You know, O C's expensive, transportation's expensive.
How is that transportation and the work that you drop off elementary school buses?
Well, you'd work out timing, I mean, that's where administration comes into play and works out the details, that's not our, you know, purpose to do. You know, that would be for them to figure out the ins and the outs and the troubles. Again, I'm just putting it out there, I'm looking at a one point five million dollar tax tag that, you know, we want to be diligent with the conversation. You know, all said and then, two point one mil, want to be diligent with the conversation, that's a big number. So just make sure that, that we're presenting it properly so that if, if that does get voted upon within the bond, because it sounds like we're going to have to eventually look at that conversation again, then at least it's, it's been vetted to the fullest extent, you know, that I can feel comfortable with as a board member and sleep tonight as well. You know, and again, I have asked these questions as, as the public side, but, you know, this is a different, this is a different lens. You know.
Just keep in mind too, on the flip side, hopefully finally to do this, to renovate seven hundred thousand from two years ago. So we're looking at escalation, two years of escalation on that, so we're looking at potentially a million dollars. So now that what we're doing to that house is bought, we can't afford to put it into general budget unless we're reducing.
Yeah, so, and if we keep the house, we also have the cost of seven hundred thousand dollars or more to renovate. And, you know, because there was a right to keep the house and do something similar. You know, we still have another million, they have to do that and seven hundred thousand, so now we're, we're.
Can I get, I get the safety part.
Yeah.
I'm just thinking the other, both coins, you know, at this point. So the safety part I totally get. I just, you know, again, it's just something that I would love a little bit more dialogue on to, to feel comfortable with the idea. I don't know if there's a timeline on the acceptance of a big process, I'm not privy to how that works. But at the end of the day, if we can just get a few more weeks to at least have a conversation a little bit deeper and work with that and see if there is any growth that we can potentially have, even within our own system.
So if you can find this next one, that's forty five days, they have to hold it. But confirm that.
So that would be by next meeting.
So next meeting.
Yeah, most, most bids have to be held firm for forty five days. I would imagine that requires, yes, it's in there. So you have forty five days before the bid and lock in the debidders.
Or do some of that back.
Correct, they can still agree to hold their bid after forty five days.
They said they have to hold it in there for that one.
Correct.
Now, what's the, what's our days looking like, what's our timeframe here? Just combine who started.
Our next meeting is until January.
August. And that'd be like August fourteenth.
Forty five days.
It's put on.
Couple of second meetings, sounds like a year.
Calendar business days.
Our calendar business days.
Calendar days.
So, Bill, so before I actually do that, start scheduling.
I'd also like to point out something because a lot of this happened before I was a work mother. And then area that I'm unclear about is between December twenty seven. is between December 27th and March 23rd. When you decided to, when you sold the property, then when we found out we're not allowed to demolish it, you said that you had sort of verbal agreement or written agreement that said that you could demolish it and then they went back and said no.
We never had a written agreement.
If you had the verification during that timeline, because that's what I think the public is upset about.
This goes into the living. Yeah, shouldn't we may want to save that for a second conversation?
I'm sorry.
Guys, I don't know.
So can we, can we table to have a further conversation since we have the timeline? We need, or do they have a special meeting in order to do that? So you want, you want a motion to table? So Lauren, you want to attend a motion to table? How do you know? Six?
Six E.
Six E?
Yeah, six E.
Six E.
Right? Yeah, six E. Yeah. And I just have another question about the tennis court. When are you looking to start repairing and how long will it take?
I'm looking to, like, one support is playing for the resolution this evening to contact them tomorrow, see if we can have it done before, sort of season starts.
False, isn't it?
False, sorry. Yes. Sorry. Before, obviously, it's on.
So you're really on like a week to, like, you're on a week to.
Yeah, I'm just concerned with the cost of that for such a short amount of time because it's going to cost almost, you know, 200,000 dollars to repair it. And that's, you're saying it's only going to last for like two years. It's about 100,000 dollars per year to just maintain that and then we're going to need to spend 650 to 800,000 dollars for new ones to add to that. Like, is it physically responsible to spend that 200,000 dollars and then in two years, you're going to have to spend more again?
It could be two years. Unfortunately, we don't know what it's going to take. You know, how it's going to hold, what it's going to get because they already use sports. It's, you know, because they can use sports as well and all sorts.
Sports, yeah.
So we think it's...
I definitely think that we need to do that.
It's what I think the people are doing right now so that they're not forced to go play elsewhere.
I, I think that, you know, to provide the point, like, well, that's the one that we're going to put in the prescription schedule.
Of course, yeah.
And I think that, you know, this is why we don't repair reserves for the unforeseen needs that you have to. So this is time to direct off the taxpayers. That is one thing we can say, right? It's, we're using the repair reserves for what the spirit of repair reserves is intended for, right? We wouldn't otherwise get heat on it. So, you know, so I mean...
And there's no other way that we can repair it in its entirety without spending like, instead of just spending the 200,000 because they look like they need to be repaired. So to have it last for a short amount of time, is it better to continue with full repair? Like, how can we come up with that money to?
I'm, I'm with you on that. It's, you know, like, because as I say, we're a money bag, right? But we do need a fix for the next couple of years so that we can try to have a better plan to, you know, really. So that's the recommendation.
Because we have a few gym classes on there. As much as it's work, yeah. Yeah, no, I agree that they need to be fixed. I'm just, I don't know what, what the best avenue is to get them fixed.
The toughest part is the timing.
Like Mark has mentioned, if we're spending 50,000 dollars for the next two years, that might be a better option to get them repaired. And then in a couple of years, just do a full rotation. I don't know.
But then he give you 50,000 dollars, then give you 150,000. So.
And Carrie, just to be clear, if, if the restart or rebuilding, rip out of a place or fold it into a capital bond and still not be able...
It wouldn't be able because we would do inside work with that. So we would maybe, unfortunately, about 70, maybe over 76 to 78 percent which is a real issue because of the cost of that.
Our struggle would be the timeline in which it needs to be done and completed by, which then takes away from the student athletes that are currently playing in this fall.
If, if you wait for lunch.
Correct. So, you know, it's not one situation in that, you know, believe over the years, you've done some repairs.
Yeah, repairing, it wasn't on our, we already used the repair reserve for this individual project, but this became a forefront. Once we had the contractor come in and really took a look at the force on and knowing that underneath it is slowly dissipated. This right now, it's a band-aid that we're putting on it, but it's a band-aid that we feel needs to be done.
Because locally, there's no town courts that are close enough for us to even relocate. Like sometimes the baseball team goes to the Mac or outside. We don't currently have anything of that caliber that is within vicinity to feel like a home.
I think margins of the house.
You know, I, I think if we can somehow figure out a way to be proactive in the conversation rather than, you know, seven years ago when we did those 15 or 18 or 30,000 dollars in repairs, it'd be great because I think people would feel better about that. It kind of stings looking at that amount of money for something that's potentially two to four year, over four years, just so they can feel a little bit better. You know, until we can get a bond test because we're basically going to be ultimately ripping up the work that is being done to sustain and allow kids to play in a sport that they love and they worked hard for. So you get caught between two places, it might be. You know, and a student athlete is, is meant to be the pride and joy of what we do here and carry on a tradition. So for us to not give them the court, in my opinion, would not be something I would be able to, to agree with in a sense. But also understanding that from the community sense, they're going to say, okay, how are we going to prevent this in the future so that we can eventually, you know, have this and if it's, if it's an item that we can build into a smaller bond? You know, I think the community benefits from it. I think the pickleball injuries in the world are going up because so many people are paying for playing pickleball now, right? And we can expand the bond, the set curriculum and the wellness committee and all that stuff, you know, then we can kind of move forward in a, in a good direction.
Can we do like another temporary there for a year and then see if we can add it to bond or do something else? Is there any other options or? I know.
No, I mean, success with the bond in one year, twice.
Right.
So to rely on that, I don't think is really our best option.
And you don't have, that's the problem. Right, we don't, it's, it's, you know, it's essential we get it done. I mean, I, I don't think that, I, I, you're suggesting a different way to repair it.
Yeah, like the, like the way that they temporarily repaired it in the past few years. I mean, because I know she was saying it's out of the cap.
Well, right, and the problem too is that because they've been filling it so much is now, but you're playing tennis and the ball hits those lines.
Yes.
It's going that way. You know, you wanted it to go and it's not where you wanted. It goes off their games. And it's not there at our studios because our studios right this manage. Now, you know, they're practicing on their courts. So it's just...
I don't know what the best answer is.
You know, to me, it sounds like it's a, it's a move that we're kind of, again, it's like between that rock and hard place, we have to make a place playable for kids to be able to play. Again, those cracks were going to grow and expand if we don't do it because of, you know, the basis of the nature of the...
Right, we can finish, we can refinish, we have gym floors for the same reasons we were starting making cracks. They were lifting, they were becoming uneven surfaces. We play a lot of sports with gyms. So, you know, we're, we're trying to figure out how to maintain things, do this repair and continue to budget smaller dollar repairs to maintain this repair going forward.
And I'm a part of the, of having great courts is that East Norish's kids, other two, we should be, we can find the market and just go here, because they want in, or go to West Hampton. And it's kids, so there's going to be an extra here.
Mark, please come, see him, what do you guys think? What do you guys think?
I don't see any other options. If nobody wants to come to do a cheaper pair, we don't have an option.
Yeah, we appreciate the feedback. And so again, it's a tough decision because we're trying to move forward on something that doesn't really give us much more. Okay. All right, so we, we kind of digressed there on that conversation. We, we have, I think, more emotion on the table is to motion to table at 6E. It looks like, in my mind, August 8th. We need to, we need that conversation.
August 8th? Okay.
We're grabbing.
I mean, I, I think, oh, I would say we're coming home. I, I vote 8 as a target. But we'll, we'll confirm that. We'll put that in motion. We'll table that and we'll revisit that.
Okay. Are we going to table those other, my goodness?
But again, you have to take them on.
You have just got to roll the agenda for second question to count. And so the presentation did not cross the count.
So.
Yeah, we're still on the first page. We want to raise it.
Questions or comments regarding this next agenda? Is an opportunity for persons who wish to speak or who have written letters to the board regarding topics that are included on this agenda. Speakers are asked to sign in if they should prior to approaching the microphone and to keep the topic of comment. Keep comments brief and to speak for no longer than three minutes. Members of the public will have the opportunity to speak about any topic at the end of the meeting. Everybody have anything they'd like to share? So now we're going to table the items or we go on to the consent agenda? I think you motioned for the, the consent agenda and then you table it within discussion.
Was I getting exactly the consent agenda?
Yeah, you table it from the consent.
Yes.
So we make a motion to amend the consent agenda to extract those items.
And you list them, all the items that go on that as well.
Where do they? You should go one at a time so that you know which ones to do. So there's no...
Sure, what you want to do. You can do it individually, you can do it as a bundle.
Okay. So like the motion to remove consent agenda items. 6B, the pair assessment contract. We need more further discussion on that. 6E.
Can I just ask the reason why versus table versus how you're using the 6E?
You need a motion. So certainly, we should make a motion, somebody should make a motion. We should get a second and then we should have a discussion. And then...
So and to run upon, I would use the motion to amend the consent agenda on one item. Have a discussion, both going to extract that or not extract it. And then the next item, same thing. Make a motion to amend the consent agenda further. Remove that item, discussion if it will.
So we're going to have motion to amend item 6B, which is the pair assessment.
Number 26.
Contract number 26.
Contract number 26. Motion.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Discussion.
Discussion.
I'd like to have a discussion of is it, what is the rationale for the table in it? I'm looking to remove it altogether.
No, the cost of it has doubled. So I wanted to see why the cost has doubled and have a discussion with everybody. I think you wanted a rational reason.
Yeah.
And that doesn't necessarily result in the table in the...
You can go on and say...
Yeah, so just why, make me know what the...
First. So there are rising costs, but we've been in addition in recent history, we've expanded demonstration of the assessment to raise three through 12. Originally, it was just 12. So we've had a very...
This past year though was for grades three through 12. So the cost per 6,000 dollars for this past year now has gone up to 11.
And you, and you purchased per, per test. So if we had carryover from the previous year, we're able to use them as a supplement here. So it's a combination of, of those three, three things. We can give a breakdown, but those are the three reasons for the change in cost of...
So you still want to move it?
I still, I mean, I would, but I'm a person. So what depends on what everybody else thinks.
So what, you made a motion now to vote to move. So now you guys vote, what are you going to move from the consent agenda or not?
Okay. Because I still would like that table of information that you're mentioning. Like, for grades 11, so.
I don't feel the need to table it. That's a lot of explanation for me, so. Any further questions?
Tom? Two?
A.
All right, so.
Yeah, no, I got you, I got you. So what's happening now is it's just, we made a motion to amend the consent agenda to take this item out to be voted on separately. Okay, so now you have a discussion on your rationale for taking it out. And now the question is, you're going to call for a vote to amend the consent agenda and remove this item. So all, all in favor? We prefer two notes to remove it. You want to remove from the consent agenda, Tom, say it. You want to remove the consent agenda? So tend to you want to remove the consent agenda? Okay, so the motion is asked to amend the consent agenda and remove this item to be voted on separately. If there are other items that you want to do the same thing on, call for a motion to further amend the consent agenda to whatever other items to be voted on separately.
So I'm going to call for a motion to amend the consent agenda for item 6E. Some things over, but it's right.
So it's eight halves.
If you need one, it says, I'll see where it says, like, you see it over there. More like we charged the last... Yes, except that it's at the business balls, it won't move all.
So Lauren, you called for a motion to remove from the consent agenda item 6E, correct?
Yeah.
Correct, so now you just have to...
Is there a motion?
Yeah, someone made a motion.
I'm seeing a motion.
I made a motion.
Is there a second?
What is this? The house, the house, it's the bid results for removal of the consent.
So Harvey, it's a second. We need to call for discussion, if you have a special justice in us. Okay, all in favor?
Yes.
So that add it down on the side, you guys have a side.
We all have to, for recording the minutes purposes, you all have to say yes or no.
Yes.
Yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So these items are all going on the side and you guys are going to get a side that you want to vote on, then table and do something else, right? You also want to do the consent agenda.
Uh, seven I, the strategic plan.
Call for a motion.
Motion.
To amend the consent agenda.
Consent agenda, item seven I.
We voted upon.
So we voted upon separately. Motion.
Motion.
Second. No.
Second, and that call for.
Discussion. I just want to know the rationale for this as well, because I think we, in my opinion, I think we should discuss it, um, on the board retreat and make sure that we are all in agreement to that.
This was about a year-long process where we had, um, community input from, um, multiple states, everything over in the district. Um, and he's presented a presentation on it last time, that's the thing that we just scheduled to the board, that committed to, um, to bring it this time.
Alright, so just to keep things in order, you've had a discussion now, this is the motion to remove it, not to get rid of it, not to write it down, not to table it, that's how it comes.
Separate, separate discussion.
Separate vote, separate discussion, so this is just right now, just to move the consent agenda, and then you guys can have a debate about what you want to do with this separate item in the next table, so. I would call for.
I, so, all in favor? To remove it? Yes.
All opposed?
All opposed, so this four eyes.
Three eyes. Three eyes.
Do you have a join and model? Did you have a consent agenda?
Um, we just wanted to modify the operating procedures. It's sort of a, is it a seven A in the consent agenda?
So you're going to call for a motion to.
You're going to be modifying, is it an attachment or a resolution itself?
Um, it's the attachment.
You have another attachment that you want, you're going to be replacing from the outside.
Um, no, I don't think, unless they added, did you, did you add that in the notes of discussion?
What?
Did you add the, the change for the.
We didn't have time, we tried to have.
That's okay, so, um. So then we're going to make a motion to remove it from the consent agenda. Seven B. For the, for the guide operating procedures, modify them, remove it first.
All in favor?
Call for a motion. So here's the motion. Second.
Second.
All in favor?
One discussion.
This is. Um, I just want to say something first, am I allowed to do that? Um, we have a lot of work to do during this call, and for more capable things, we only have a very limited amount of meetings left. So I will be, I will say yes, I just want to put that up there for us to make progress, um, we need to consider that.
Call for a vote on the table.
All in favor? Yes.
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 Alright, so now you can call for a motion to vote on the consent agenda as amended.
Call for a motion to vote on the consent agenda as amended. Motion.
Motion.
Second. Second. All in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Now you're reading those last items, so you can decide if you want to defer to exec session first, to discuss anything that's a common subject of exec. And if you know you want to table these now for another meeting, you can do them individually, or you can do it as a group.
Okay, so we'll table them to the next meeting.
So you want to make a motion to table all of these items?
Yes.
For discussion in the next meeting.
Do you want to add one of these topics? We tonight, after executive.
I think we have a lot more to talk about, things that have just transpired, so, you know.
Well, what is, what is allowed for executive session? And those things.
But, so you counsel these items, you got, I don't, I don't know what the issue is, I can't really advise in terms of what other pro cases it's for executive session, okay? You want to make a motion, call to move to executive session, so counsel it.
Um, I think we should hold off until the retreats discussing some of these things, so. We agreed, you motioning to them?
So you already discussed tables.
Table, well, the house, how's people put up in next meeting?
Yeah.
So the tabling is going to be that it's not going to be voted on again today.
Correct.
It should be tabled until it's put back on the table at a certain.
Yes.
So why don't we, why don't we each have, you said, and then call for all of each other to have a discussion. So the first one that we pull off, I'm just.
With six B, which is the pair contract.
And you're going to call for a motion to table that, correct?
Yes.
What motion to table?
Motion to table the pair assessment. Second. Second. All in favor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Two, two notes. Hey, if you want a discussion on any of these items, I should just do a discussion.
A motion to table six E. Motion.
What was that one?
Sixty. What is sixty? Second. Second. Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Now, a motion to table seven B, for the bed operating procedures. Motion. So we discuss that in executive session, maybe.
For any procedures, you have legal questions about it, yes?
Motion. Um, I'd like to get some more comments on that topic.
So you want to take a motion to give in to executive session to, uh.
If you want, so you could, we could vote on the remainder that have consensus on, and then we could leave whatever is left going for exec. Consider efficiency of process at the end, become act exec, and vote on those.
Okay, so the last one is seven I, the strategic plan, motion to table strategic plan, motion. Motion. Second.
Second.
Discussion. Yes?
All in favor?
All in favor? Yes.
Yes.
No?
No.
Three yeses, two no's.
So that leaves you with seven B remaining?
Seven B is the only one to modify that. Yeah, general public comment. There's a three minute.
So just pick your gradually one there too.
Oh, yes.
Congratulations. Super excited to see.
Yes. Now, general public comment? There's a three minute time limit for participants. Members of the public who desire to address or question the board on any topic related to the board work are welcome to do so at this time. Speaking of a question to link their remarks to not, to not more than three minutes, to appoint a spokesperson if the concern is a group concern, and to supplement verbal presentation with written reports if necessary or desired. Anybody who have anything to add?
Does anyone have anything?
Uh, there is the book on there.
Right, so I.
Mine's.
Alright, this is a canned topic, correct, not a really toy all day. Alright, so, um, I know some people here, my name is Joey RC, I have two children in the district. Um, just want to raise these items to the board, and I have, um, just some disappointments this year. Uh, my son's ninth grade rap class, he had, uh, six teachers, and I butchered some of his names, I apologize. Uh, Sarah Zinsky, um, we just, okay, okay, just five, just six different teachers throughout the year. Um, even with that said, he was excelling last, he had a ninety-seven grade, his fourth mark period, ninety-four average. Uh, throughout the year, he did express concerns with the instability in the classroom, but it's affecting his learning. Um, I did email the principal in April and expressed concerns that I hope this did not affect his regents results. Um, unfortunately, my son did fail the regents, but, and I do feel like the district failed him with instability in the classroom. Um, there was no signs of concern throughout the year with the six teachers, nobody emailed me and my wife and said that this could be a concern. Um, so it's unfortunate that he has to, uh, attend this refresher, take the regents again, and going forward, my concern is, did he learn enough this year to pass the regents on the second time, and is he prepared for temporary math? Um, not only that, it's going to be a burden for me and my wife to jumpstart it on the work schedules to make sure we get him to this refresher, so. Um, I know my son failed, we expect more from him, and we let him know that he's going to attend the sessions and want him to work his best to pass the second time, but I just want the board to know I failed, that the district failed my son. Thank you.
Is he currently in sessions now for the August regents?
Um, I think they start in July, so he will be in September.
And you said ninety-seven, ninety-seven grade overall?
Uh, ninety-one, Jim was at ninety-seven, fourth mark period. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else have anything to add? So the next board of education meeting is Tuesday, August twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-four, in the district boardroom. Okay, so we are going to move into executive session. For, for the constations council.
Is there any other things that you want to, any other topics from the executive agenda list?
Negotiations, personnel.
Yes. Negotiations, personnel.
Uh, call for a motion?
Motion.
Motion.
Second. Second.
Here's, yes.
All in favor?
Yes.
Yes. Are you going to be returning to do more business and the executive? Um, yes, possibly just that one.
Address one layer.
Yep. We'll address just seven. Yes, board operating.
Congratulations, welcome.